And if you could please join me in a moment of silence? I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 21st.
So moved.
Second.
By Keith, seconded by Suzanne. Do we have any additions, changes, edits? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five. We're unanimous, thank you. And I would likewise entertain a motion for the approval of the October 23rd School Board Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Keith, seconded by... Seconded by Ben. Any discussion, changes? Ben?
I was not at that meeting. That was a Wednesday meeting.
Yes.
I was, um, I don't, Suzanne was...
No, I wasn't.
And I was absent also at that meeting, so please just move that.
Okay. Do we have any other changes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Abstained? And abstention, seeing none. Four, zero, one. I would again entertain a motion to approve October 28th Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
By Keith, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ben, any discussion? Changes, omissions?
No.
Additions? All right, all in favor as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
You're, I'm sorry, Jenny, you're abstaining. Okay, so one, two, three, four, zero, two. Thank you. And that brings us to the October 30th School Board Meeting Minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve.
No, I don't have this.
October 30th.
You don't have them here, okay, so...
I didn't see them.
Denise, is this a printed agenda that I'm working on that's printed?
It is.
Okay. All right. We have a correspondence folder.
Two items in the correspondence folder. One is a memo that I sent to Sudarussow on behalf of the board requesting access to Kathy Ball and possibly her staff for the special election. And the second piece is a substitute report.
Thank you.
If I may on that, Diane?
Yes.
If I can speak, the, tonight, the selectmen are meeting and in a few moments they're supposed to be taking that up. If it be the will of the committee, I do not mind to go to downtown to sit with Kathy to have a face from the school board.
And we do have five people here, so that would be all right.
If it be the pleasure of the committee, I will do that and I will be back post haste.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a good plan. Okay, thank you, Dan. All right, commendations and good news. Could start?
All right. All right, from the elementary schools, Maple Avenue, we had the annual Halloween parade last week and it was a great success. Thank you to the Goffstown High School marching band for providing music. Our garden club harvested their cool weather crops last week and prepared the garden beds for the winter. The children were able to bring home some lettuce, kale, radishes, and beef greens. And our gardener, our master gardener, Tracy Morley, will be offering a spring gardening club as well. At Bartlett, the Boston Museum of Science visited with the fourth graders. During their presentation entitled "Geology: Rock Detectives," the fourth graders worked in groups and completed experiments on the characteristics of rocks. And then when they were finished, they reviewed the characteristics to determine the type of rock. And this presentation is part of a traveling program from the Museum of Science and was paid in full through a scholarship. On November 15th, Bartlett students and staff will be participating in the annual Turkey Walk. And participants will be collecting food for the Goffstown Network. On October 23rd, Bartlett's fourth graders took their annual field trip to the State House and the Museum of New Hampshire History. And the feedback that they received from Concord about the students' behavior was very positive, so they all did a good job. Glen Lake School, Glen Lake is celebrating the season with a fall harvest theme day. They did that this past Wednesday. The students were able to test seasonal pumpkin and apple treats and they created fall crafts and took part in a scooterboard corn maze. The Fall Harvest Theme Day is offered by the school as a curriculum based alternative to a more traditional Halloween celebration as it's more appropriate for those younger students. And the staff at Glen Lake took part in a variety of professional development options on Friday, including a training on social thinking and how it correlates to improved achievement throughout the curriculum. Continued training in close reading and maximizing their use of technology in the early childhood programs.
Excellent, thank you. Jenna?
From Mountain View, student government is up and running. We'll work on our Veterans Day Assembly which will be this Friday. It's going to be a whole school event, which is exciting. And we're also holding our first dance on Friday.
You can't hear?
No, people at home can't hear.
I want to be louder.
Move your mic closer.
So we'll work on our Veterans Day Assembly for this Friday and then we also have our first student government dance this Friday. We're working on Spirit Days and what we do is for Spirit Days, we go around with like a bucket and we pick some type of charity or someone in need and we ask for any donations if they want it. And then we donate the money to different places. We've given some of the money last year to the schools, some to... Trying to think what we did last year. To different charities. I forget what we did.
I think Superstorm Sandy Victims last year, Jenna?
And then there was like the, so the dogs that we did, like Peace and Paws, we gave some money to. So just a way like they get to dress up and have fun, but then also we're doing something for the community. We have the Turkey Truck coming up and we're going to start collecting our non-perishable food drive. For Fireflood Challenge, I have this article, if anyone wants to read it, about the 250 eighth grade students that participated in this. And not only did they do the challenge, but some people had really cool chants and banners that they made and doors. They wrote short stories which were amazing. We got to listen to a few of them. So that was a huge success. We have the Monarchs game next Wednesday. Keep bringing this up, but it's coming. And the last thing, which is a new thing, the student government, we're going to get a group together and on the 15th of November, we're going to go to Stand Up to Bullying and it's at UNH in Durham. And they have little groups that we do stuff with and then they go around and have like big, whole lovers there. They have presentations for anti-bullying.
Cool. Thank you.
At the high school, I got a few things. The workshop, the teacher workshop on Friday went well. We had a good presentation and discussion about the Common Core standards and smarter balance testing. And then we had staff-led workshops on research skills, SMARTboard use, Google Docs, and competency-based grading. And those were all great. And the theater did a great job this weekend with their production and evening of the Mooncom Friday and Saturday nights. And Student Council did a great job with Homecoming Week and now they're working on the Veterans Day Assembly which will be on the 12th.
Very good, thank you. Any other commendations or good news?
I just want to say it was terrific to see both the articles in the Goffstown News about Mountain View and Maple. I thought they were very, very good.
That was good, wasn't it?
Yes. You need to do that more.
I have to say the crab that I've been about Goffstown News. Recently, there has actually been news articles about our kids and people in town which I just, I just think is great. I did have some good news. I heard, I don't know specifics, but heard a lot of good news about sports teams and playoffs at the high school. Field hockey went to, um, to, oh my goodness, 105 even over. Went on for their after-season as did girls and boys soccer and volleyball as well. And they all had really great seasons.
The golf team did well too. Thirteen and six.
Golf team did?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Seventh place for Division Two.
That's excellent.
And I read that the Spirit Team won the championship.
Did they?
I heard that.
Not very much about that, but I read it in the Boston Bulletin. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, Screaming Eagles Team did. They took state champs.
Oh, okay.
But I don't know specifically what grade level. But I know they took state championships. Did a great job. All right, I'll now open the floor. Ben?
Just, I think all of you have received a notification from the Goffstown Historical Society about this Saturday up at the Grassmere Roundabout. I've encouraged you all to attend. I've been asked by the Historical Society to take part in that presentation. Jane and I will be there in colonial attire. And we'll be talking about the New Hampshire Minutemen, particularly John Stark, the first New Hampshire regiment, and that situation. And Jane and I will both be honoring our patriot ancestors who were involved in the Revolutionary War. So it's going to be a lot of fun. It's going to be a lot of fun. So if you make it, it's 11 o'clock. Step on the circle.
Excellent, thank you. All right, I'll open the floor to public comment. Do we have public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will move to our Standing Committee reports. Policy Review Committee, it looks like we're still working on a meeting for the end of, end of November?
Yeah, we're going to shoot for 25th.
Okay. All right. Planning and Communications, Reta wasn't able to join us, but PNC did meet tonight. We talked about two things in particular. We did talk about making sure that we got notices out about our upcoming election on December 4th as far as what it's about and why it's important to participate. We also did speak about the Dream Keeper and the Cornerstone Awards because it's that time again to start letting people know about them and soliciting some nominations for those two awards which of course we award at our deliberative session in February. So our plan is of course to reach out via the usual outlets of these school newsletters and whatnot to go ahead and share that information. We won't meet again until the first Monday in December. CNN?
We've not met since our last meeting. We do have a meeting scheduled for the 25th at 7:00 PM at the SAU. And that will be a wrap-up meeting. The principals will be there. It's a really interesting meeting and anybody who's available is open to the public as well. I invite you to go to that meeting. Lot of good information.
Excellent. I've heard good things, thank you. Budget Committee Report, Budget Committee hasn't met since we met last, but I'm sure they are eagerly awaiting the delivery of our budget as promised for Wednesday. A and F?
Yes. We have a couple of items to cover tonight, plus I think Suzanne has a motion to bring after I make my presentation. We have two manifests for deliberation. One, the first one is the June 30th. It is a housekeeping item. It is in the amount of $2.7 million total. It is for basically the payroll, the balloon checks in the end of June, the regular pay. That comes $2.2 million. There is special ed services totaling roughly $111,000. And there's general expenses of about $7,300. Subtotal, the itemized expenses is $2.3. The grand total for consideration from this is all coming out of the last year's appropriation is $2.7, $2,778,690.30.
Second.
So moved by Ben, seconded by Suzanne. Go ahead.
Okay. The second motion is on the November 4th manifest, the total manifest is...
Yeah, you know what, Ben? Can we just, can we solve one before we move on to the other?
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, that's fine. I was just waiting to see where you were going before I jumped in too.
You said let's go, so I mean, hey, this is, give me the floor and I'll take it.
No, no.
I'm accustomed, as I am, to public speaking.
So what I'm looking for is any discussion on the motion on the floor, any questions, any further comment on that specific motion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. We are unanimous, thank you. Okay, now you may carry on.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, the second manifest is for November 4th. Total manifest value is $2,030,208.45. Payroll, there is a Goffstown Education stipend. Payroll taxes, $466,000. The total, subtotal of that account of all the payroll is $1.5, little over $1 million. Special ed activities, Crotchet Mountain, Lighthouse School, Parker Academy, Whiteco, for a total of $191,000 change. General expenses, Goffstown Truck Center, October Transportation, GE Capital for Apple laptops advanced payment, PSNH, $20,000 for October for all schools, business machines, and legal services for the district. General subtotal of general expenses is $280,000, almost $281,000. The subtotal is one, the itemized is $1,527,543.35. Again, the grand total is $2,030,208.45.
Second.
Okay, by Ben, seconded by Suzanne. Does anyone have any questions or further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Do you have something?
We have an item that we're not sure we brought, that the board has seen before, if I'm correct. If you recall last, last fall, last summer, we made a, we discovered that we had overcharged New Boston and Dunbarton in their tuition because we used the wrong building assessment. And apparently, my recollection is we agreed to make a reduction in their first tuition bill for the next two years for the amount that we came up with. And apparently, it doesn't, we can't find any record that we brought that to the board.
I remember it coming to the board because I remember us talking about it.
Yeah.
I can remember I was sitting in this seat, like I'm trying to get the frame because I've been trying to figure out where we find this in the minutes. Because I do, I remember it coming to the board and us voting and agreeing on it. Of course, there's so much business that we, do they, they get money, so we need to continue to look for the minutes to determine.
I thought they had pretty, done a pretty thorough search of previous minutes already and couldn't find it. Is that correct?
Do you know what timeframe you were looking at?
I went from probably around December, November, December of 2012.
So just, November, December of 2012 through the 13?
Right. See, I started at the beginning, like at 11, 12 year because we did a full year in 2012 of the area.
So you were looking in December of 2012 as in the last December we had or the December previous?
I think it was in the summer.
See, this is what I, I know.
The last meeting was December 2nd.
I remember going to those meetings in shirt sleeves. I mean...
See, I remember it before then. I remember it like being like a May or June 2012.
I don't know if it was, I can't, I just remember.
We'll continue to look. It's not something that...
It's something I'm happy to help with too, to go through the minutes so we can... Do you agree with the timeframe that it wasn't, it wasn't a few months ago?
No.
And it wasn't last December, but it was previous to?
I believe that's...
I believe it was spring 2012 is what I'm remembering.
Well, I don't know about spring, but warmer weather.
Right, yeah, like in there. Like I'm thinking like May or June 2012 is where my memory is putting it right now.
I can remember us having to shut the air conditioners upstairs because they would make it too much noise.
Okay. I mean, there's no question that we've all been through our share of meetings about a certain topic. So I'm open to being muddled, but I'm putting it in the same area you're putting it in.
And Dunbarton is looking to see what we're going to do because we did make that agreement with them.
Right, and they're looking for the authorization, which was an oversight. I mean, we just...
Yeah. So, that's all for me.
Okay.
Do you want to add anything more on that or have we covered it?
We'll continue to search.
Please.
Suzanne, when you were saying that it was upstairs, that you're talking, yes, they would.
Yes.
Building.
Yeah.
So you're talking to joint board?
Well, it was, it was a committee to try and work out what to do about this overcharge.
So that, that would have been a vote.
See, but I remember it coming here.
This here board.
It would have been brought to this board, yeah.
Yeah. So that vote would have had to come from here for it to be in force.
And my memory puts it at this table, but I'm open to being wrong. Like I said, like I said, we've talked about so many different things, but I do remember speaking about it at this table and coming to an agreement. I do. It's a question of finding the written record.
Yeah, because we had a long discussion about how the arrow was made with the assessment, the wrong, using the wrong assessment and all of that.
Okay, so we'll continue looking in minutes. Hank?
Want to check the cash flow? Did they get billed for it or?
Did we get billed?
Did they, did they get a reduced billing?
They did not. They got an unadjusted bill last, last week.
They've been, they've been asking questions, so that's why we're running.
Yes, they sent an inquiry of, you know, we've noticed this oversight and it really truly was. You know, can you please direct? So that's, that's where this come from. But it does seem important to find the, the direction that was given prior to doing so. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, is that it for A and F?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right. Elementary Facilities Building Committee?
Nothing new to report, I'm sorry.
All right.
That last meeting was just so busy.
Goffstown, Dunbarton, Two Mission Committee report. Since we met last, the two committees, we did get together and have a meeting and we agreed upon an MOU. I have the copies that I would like to share with you. The MOU itself has been vetted by Legal, but the appendix did not make it on the attachment to Legal. It is drawn from the area agreement itself. Essentially what happened is we went in to the meetings. We started off, we proposed, just want to send them down that way. We proposed an MOU to Dunbarton that included all students of Goffstown, of Goffstown High School and all students in Mountain View Middle School. We were disappointed that the Dunbarton School Board did not wish to consider the students of Mountain View at the time that we sat down and spoke about this MOU. But perhaps that would be considered later, but this MOU in particular, because of their feelings, does focus exclusively on the students at Goffstown High School, namely the students in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade.
Also, just to add to that, they also didn't want to accept siblings. We had said siblings we would include.
Right, they were very specific. They only wanted to talk about 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. But I do think it's important for this board to know that we did go in with a written and, you know, we already had it all, you know, set up and approved by Legal that would include all students, all Dunbarton students in the Goffstown District, including Mountain View and the high school. This agreement, it did come through from our attorney. It is this fairly standard MOU. Trying to think of a couple things in here to point to your attention. If you go on page two, transportation, it's not necessarily, it's not important at Goffstown necessarily, but the Dunbarton group did want it put in that they were under no obligation to provide transportation to their own students. That was not something that our board asked for or whatnot. That was something specifically, you know, that they had asked for. I do want you guys to have a chance to look over this. Jenny, is there anything else I'm omitting in, in sharing this?
That's about the only thing. They did suggest that since there were some students that transportation would be an issue for, that we could provide them a bus.
What was that then?
I did offer the suggestion that maybe we could go 50/50 on a bus to support their students. Other than that, I don't really think there was anything different from what we started with and what we ended up with.
Right.
Except for a couple of little wordsmithing things, but nothing to have a real meaning in it.
Yeah, and Legal Counsel?
Amendment to this thing?
Did go through, yes.
On the button on transportation?
No, this is the MOU. If the bus situation would be something, we would have to, you know, decide.
Okay, all right.
So that's not part of this at all.
It probably would be to our advantage to...
And what this does establish, of course, if you recall when we met, I can't quite remember the date, so forgive me, but it was a meeting in which we determined that we would calculate the tuition charge based upon how we would have through the area agreement, had the area agreement passed. So that's where all the appendix A comes in. The appendix A is drawing out the significant portions of the area agreement that speak to charging, that speak to how we, how we calculate the tuition.
Question?
Yes, please.
Might it be? A good, might it be a good idea for us to find out how much it would cost for a bus?
I think we have some ideas based on our budget and how much it would cost.
We probably have some, some ideas, but you know, it seems to me if we're going to lose a whole bunch of kids because they don't have transportation, it might behoove us to maybe pick up half the cost of the bus so that we don't lose all that tuition revenue.
I do hear what you're saying, but I also simultaneously feel that they, they are collecting tax money from their people to pay for the buses.
I understand that.
And that's a good 87 students that wish to continue on to, to Goffstown High School. And I would encourage them strongly to, to look long and hard at how they can meet the needs of their students.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, but I'd like to be prepared.
I understand what you're saying.
I think it should be their responsibility first.
It is.
And if they're not going to do it, then we can talk about, you know, where we'll go from there. There were like only two students or two families, Brian, did you say that?
That transportation, the, the lack of transportation would be prohibitive for them. I think it was more than that, Jenny.
Was it?
Yeah, I want to say maybe four. I don't have the data in front of me. Mrs. Moran, does that sound about right to you? I think four or five families had identified that the lack of a bus would be a barrier.
And there were like 50 students, so four out of the 50 that...
No, there were 97. And of the 97, only four of the 97 indicated a preference to go to Bo. So we're expecting a significant percentage of those 97 kids.
So one bus probably wouldn't even be enough then.
Well, I don't think they would all take the bus, even if a bus were offered. You know, certainly the older kids drive, they carpool.
Interesting.
Ben?
You say there's maybe four or five students. Would that be a situation where there would be one central pickup and they would have, they would have to come to that, all of their parents would have to get the students to a central point instead of running the bus around a normal route?
Right now, they meet at Dunbarton School.
Okay.
And they do, their bus is all the little kids first, then a second trip, all of, am I correct on that?
Yeah, they, they centrally drop off at Dunbarton Elementary. So then it would essentially be a shuttle from there.
So you would, you may not need a, maybe you can pass through 35, 4 or 5 students, you'd probably do it in a smaller, smaller...
I think, I think if you offered, I think if we offered, Goffstown offered transportation, there would be a significant number of kids.
Well, then if that's the case, then you would probably have to add maybe two. Well, then if that's the case, then you would probably just add maybe two buses, maybe. If you have ninety some odd students, that's longer than the travel.
I, yeah, again, I don't think you'd, I don't think you'd get them all.
Yeah, but, okay. Fine, thank you.
Interesting.
Do you have any idea how many children meet their eligibility?
All, all of the ninety-seven would meet their eligibility. As set forth within the document.
And to, to be clear, there may be some students, um, that have IEPs that would be here until age twenty-one. So there would be those students as well that may continue longer than the three years of this.
Do we have any other questions or discussion about the MOU? Do I have a motion regarding the MOU?
Well, the thing is though, the, um, appendix hasn't gone vetted to legal yet though.
It has not, you are correct.
I'm a little concerned because if we're going to make a motion to accept it, I think we need to accept the appendix as well.
It hasn't technically gone to legal this time, but it was the appendix that was in the, um, area agreement, basically.
You didn't change any of the wording at all?
No.
No.
It was, it was copied and pasted.
Yeah.
It has been checked for, you know, verified. I understand what you're saying about vetting. I wanted to be very clear with you guys that that did not make it in, as an attachment when it got sent out, but simply the MOU did.
Well, if you said you cut and pasted, and it, and it's obvious that you did, um, because you start, you don't start the way it started on the other ones, um, I guess I, I would just want to have to look at the original appendix A before, before I say yea or nay on this, because, um, section one and two are not included in this current cut and paste.
Right.
And I just want to know what we, what we deleted.
Okay.
I think we just put it as A instead of one and two in the MOU. Isn't that what we did?
Yeah, I'm actually getting my fingers on it right now.
I don't believe that's how the appendix originally started. What?
Um, that would be for you.
Okay, we took out the part about naming the schools.
Right.
And the quality of education, the two sections we took out.
The section of the area, and like I said, what remains is are those sections of the area um, that pertain to the calculation of the tuition.
Give me a couple minutes, I'll have to check this.
No worries. At the same time, I would entertain additional questions.
All right, and then you just took out transitional programs and all, train area meetings and things like that.
Yeah, we took out everything that wasn't related to the, really just to the A, MOU.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it appears to me too. I'm, I'm just taking a quick peek though, and section you pulled out, make sure.
But then it refers to the appendix in the, um, in the area.
Come again, please?
It refers to the appendixes, which are all in the area as well.
Yes, um, our original MOU had, um, had everything singled out, sections three, four, A one, A two. And, and the preference at the table became to please just incorporate it into one document. Which is why those, those pieces got merged and sections three, four, A one, A two, A three just became appendix A and, and we're, we're put that way.
They're giving up their opportunity to participate in any subcommittees. Goffstown School District, why they still have kids here? Is that, and deleted out of it?
Again.
Is that their intention or?
Things in there are regarding calculation of tuition. This is strictly an MOU regarding tuition.
Yeah, I'm just wondering though, I mean, some of the things we took out, I mean, what's your understanding? Are they still allowed to come and participate at our subcommittee meetings or?
No, this is the legal and binding document.
Okay.
Or it would be if I were given authorization to sign on the Goffstown School Boards behalf and enter in such an agreement.
Because they aren't really part of our area anymore, they're part of those areas.
Right.
This is just a tuition agreement that we're in with them and, and not necessarily all that was in the area is now.
Oh, I agree. I just thought that, that was something noticeable that I guess they were willing not to do that, so.
They didn't bring it forward.
Okay. All right, I don't have a problem with what you took out.
Um, well, once again, I would ask, do I have a motion on the floor or may I have a motion? Jenny?
Um, I'd like to make the motion that, um, we accept the MOU with Dunbarton.
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
And second advice Suzanne, do I have any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain?
Yeah, I only got the page two, so.
Okay, so one, two, three, four, five in favor, no opposed, one abstention. Thank you very much. Um, this brings us to the SAU Executive Officers Superintendent Search Committee, which plans to meet tomorrow at six?
Yes, at the SAU upstairs.
Six?
Now, six o'clock, typo on the agenda.
Yeah, it's six o'clock.
All right, and this brings us to the superintendent's report.
Just a few quick items for the board's attention. We had, um, we were notified this, this past week that we should expect an increase in our property and liability insurance because of the ongoing drainage issues here at the high school. Now that we've had a second event occur, we have a pattern of water intrusion. And unfortunately, this is a painful one, we're expecting a forty thousand dollar increase in the premium from about ninety-seven thousand to a hundred and forty thousand for that policy. Um, we are seeking clarification. If they would reconsider if we did a water mitigation drainage project and we reduced the risk of that, would they consider a reduction in the premium? It, the, the quick math would be in the scope of, um, a year and a half or so, a project would pay for itself. If we were to look at a fifty plus thousand dollar drainage correction, um, project. Ray and I will be, we'll be meeting with the folks from Meridian, which is the engineering firm. The Public Works Department, Mr. Aggett and Mr. McBride, and we will look again at what our options are and really get a good cost analysis of what we would be looking at. Um, we are very fortunate, the owner of Meridian is a Goffstown resident and parent. And he has been, um, very giving of his time and supportive of us. I've not had the chance to meet him yet, but, uh, look forward to doing so, so we'll continue to work on this. I'm sorry, that's, uh, bad news.
What do you think the possibility of the forty thousand dollars being reduced if we do the mitigation?
Mr. Labor?
Will not be reduced. The changes, they're now basing the premiums on loss experience.
Okay.
In the future, it might.
In the future, it might, yes.
Do we know what the idea, the underwriting is? Is it a three-year experience or a five-year experience history? It's a five-year experience history, okay. Ouch.
Well, the bad news at the high school from a maintenance and facilities perspective continues. We had a hot water heater go here at the high school, so we had an emergency situation to replace that. Uh, the board will likely remember that last year we took, I believe, all of the money out of emergency repair lines for the high school. So, so far this year, we had twelve thousand dollars of the, um, of the expansion tanks that happened. Now we've had this hot water heater. And lastly, we have received, um, we've had some issues with the bleachers down in the gym. And we have reason to believe there are some safety concerns that we are fixing and correcting, and that's about an eight thousand dollar bill. So just in the projects I mentioned, we're well over twenty thousand dollars of emergency repairs that were unbudgeted. Um, we will be taking those out of the emergency repair line that we will be deficit spending. So in subsequent budgeting cycles, we'll see the actuals, um, as they occurred. But, um, some, some tough situations for us there.
Brian, um, I can't remember what year we created, but any changes on the line item that exceeds five thousand dollars? In other words, if you're stealing more than five thousand from other line items, you have to report it to the board as to where it came from?
I think at this point, we were planning on taking it from, um, what I continue to call teacher turnover money. So salary lines that we had realized some savings because we had some high, um, end teachers retire last year.
Yeah, because the policy was a principle, if it was more than a thousand, had to report it to you as superintendent. And if it exceeded five thousand, the board had to be made aware of the line item, so we kind of did that so when we talk about our budget, we have a better idea of, you know, why we did something, so it was a history. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I was glad to hear the teachers report out on Teacher Workshop Day, so I will not, uh, repeat any of those elements. And lastly, um, several of us met with the Goffstown Police Department and the Goffstown Fire Department last week. Specifically, Mr. McBride, Mrs. Hastings, um, Ms. Gillis, myself, and Mrs. Rogers, the guidance director here from the high school. We met with Captain Brown and several of his officers and Chief O'Brien. And we are looking to compile all of the different curriculum elements that we infuse into our children's education focused on safety. So looking at everything from personal safety, like wearing helmets when kids are riding bicycles, to drug and alcohol awareness, um, stranger danger with little kids. And we're looking to do a brief survey on behalf of the school district, the fire department, and the police department. Asking parents if they would like to see more information, if they'd like to see, um, presentations for parents at night and that sort of thing. Really just focusing on some of the, the real tragedies that we've seen, not only in Goffstown recently with, um, our fifth grader, the youngster who was hit by the car, but also the young lady from the North Country who went missing. Um, so we really were focused on what can we do collectively as a community to help our kids be safe? To share resources and to share information, um, from a curriculum perspective with kids. So that's something I will come back to you with more information as we gather it.
Do we have an update on how that child's doing, the fifth grader?
Um, I have not gotten an update this week from Ms. Gillis. She's been in close contact with the parent. Um, I think that she's shared that he is in a rehab, um, situation at this point, which I think is encouraging, um, but certainly a long road ahead. And Mountain View has done a, a great job, um, coming together as a community, supporting each other. And, um, they've reached out to the family, they've sent cards to the child, and, and a lot of those, um, items have happened.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the Lions Field Meeting Discussion Update.
Well, Mr. Labor and I met with Mr. Gross on behalf of the Lions Club Board on Friday. We have a document that we've worked on. I think at this point, we would be ready to bring this to the next school board meeting, if it's the board's pleasure. We've gone through and had some language changes. Ray and I went and met with Scott out at the Lions Field on Friday. We looked at the property. There were some, a few concerns about the structural integrity of the so-called press box at the baseball field, so we went up and took a look at that. We looked at the garage. Um, there were some issues with, uh, what we call the fence topper, that yellow plastic um, piece that goes over the top of the chain link fence, so that if a kid goes to catch a, a foul ball or if someone's hitting a home run, that they don't get hurt. There are some pretty extensive damages to that that we would need to take care of this year for safety purposes. But apart from that, it was a, a good meeting. We continue to be appreciative and thankful of the Lions Club and um, wanting to make sure that our kids still have access to fields. And actually, um, the board may recall, we budgeted ten thousand dollars, which is a five thousand dollar increase in that line. And we actually think it's going to be a little less than that. Um, as we, as we got clarification on this, originally I thought we were going to simply have the agreement that we were, um, cutting a check to the Lions Club. That's actually not what the Lions Club wants to do. They want us to take over the operational expenses. So we would pay for the fertilizing, we'd pay the water bill, we'd pay the electricity bill, et cetera. And it will be less than we, um, originally had planned. I think we'd want to keep the ten thousand dollars for now because we think we're going to need to do some work there. Um, particularly the, the fence topper, we'll have to do right away, but that press box. Um, Ray and I got up there and, uh, between the two of us, the floor was sagging a little bit, which I, I think has more to do with the floor than it has to do with Ray and I, but, um, we, we, we would def. But we would definitely need to do a little bit of work there to make sure that it's a safe, a safe environment for, um, for all of our folks.
Now, are they looking to simply lease it to us?
They're looking to do a one-year lease with us, and their next steps, they're having the property appraised. And they are looking at a development possibility of what could they do with the property. They've been very upfront that if the, if the value of the property is, I think somewhere in the five to six hundred thousand dollar range, they intend to sell it, and they would like to give all of that money to the town to help support the new fields project and the vision of the athletic complex over by the transfer station. If in fact, the value comes in lower, they would, the Lions Club has indicated that they'd either like to make a donation to the school district with the condition that we would continue to allow Tri-Town to access the fields as they historically have. Or that they would enter into a long-term kind of lease agreement with the district where we may, over the course of twenty years, um, have a lease to own option with the Lions Club. But at this point, they're, they're not expecting anything to happen imminently. And they, um, they're going to work with realtor and a developer and see what their options are.
Do we have a timeframe on this?
Well, they.
It's in process now.
But are they looking to sell it? Let's say they find out that it's something that they want to sell.
I think it would be a few years out.
Sell it post haste or is it?
No, Mr. Gross made it sound like probably a three-year time lapse before they actually would be at the point to be able to sell it.
They did commit to giving both the school district and Tri-Town soccer plenty of advance notice so that, uh, other plans, if needed, could be arranged.
Okay.
Now, currently, um, we were paying five thousand, Tri-State was paying, I think, some money as well, I don't remember the na, number of.
They're, they're paying a little, actually a little bit more than that. But they were also paying for, um, they were paying for fertilization, they were paying for lawn, for mowing. Um, some of the costs would be shifted if the district took over management of the property.
We could, the town can take care of it.
The, the town would cut the grass for us, so that's about a five thousand, almost a five thousand dollar savings. And we think we could do a little better than what they're paying for, um, fertilization and, and we have a little more buying power than.
But you're looking, but you're looking for Tri-Town to still participate next year on the field.
Yes.
Are they going to be paying something towards the cost?
Yeah, they're, they're going to be paying the same cost.
And who collects that money?
Again, I think it would be directly to vendors, um, that they would be paying for services. What we would do is we, the, the agreement that we have, that's really in, in pretty finished form at this point with the Lions Club, we would subsequently enter into an MOU, um, with Tri-Town that would, that would spell out who's paying for what, what the sequence of payments would be, et cetera. And, um, we have met with the Tri-Town folks and, um, really nice guys. They're, they're on board with all of this.
And it's a long and successful relationship.
It is. And it works.
No, I was just concerned how we're going to deal with Tri-Town. I didn't want them to get alienated or.
No, they, they would, they would absolutely retain the same access to the fields, and they actually use. And they actually use half of the garage. If you're familiar with, with the facility, they've got half of that garage where they keep all of their, their gear, their equipment, et cetera. So they would retain that. We actually wouldn't be using the garage at all. The district wouldn't. So if it's the board's pleasure, we, we would be ready to bring this, I think, to the next, to the next board meeting. And we can send it out ahead of time for the board's review.
In the packet?
In the packet.
Absolutely. Is that unfair? Okay. Next item is going on to the budget, but I think just for, if you don't mind, I'd like to just continue on and finish the rest of the agenda before we go back. Because I think the budget discussion, it should be a very long one. So what do you say if we tie up all our little bits and pieces and then, and then do the big piece? So if we can go into new business, GHS Field trip, we're close. Is this a return trip?
This is a return trip, but we're bringing it to you because it's out of state.
Okay. And per our board policy, when we do have a repeat out-of-state trip, this is just notified for information only. We would only require a motion if we wish to not allow them to take this repeat trip. Okay, we have a track change?
We do. We have a track change for Jacqueline Hamilton, moving from Bachelor's 15 to Bachelor's 30. And we have several, oh, you'll do that one first.
Okay. Do you have someone to pass around?
I do.
Is that for all of us?
Yep.
I just love watching these meetings at home. You don't get all those paperwork.
Right? That could be a good thing, Suzanne.
I know.
All right, do I have, do I have a motion on the track change?
Since it's contractual, we need one.
We don't need a motion, I don't believe.
No.
Just a notification.
It's in the contract.
Notification.
Would we send a note saying congratulations?
Congratulations, nice word.
Could B-15 to B-30?
We, we will be happy to do that.
Yeah, we have been in the past.
Okay. And we have student observers?
We have one, two, three, four, five student observers. They are all from Southern New Hampshire University. I believe I've had two of them in class.
Do I have a motion? By Keith, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, by Ben. Ben beat you, Jenny. All right, any further discussion? Questions, comments, et cetera? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all set? We're unanimous, thank you. All right, any other business that may legally come before this meeting?
Can we ask Denise an update?
We sure can.
Yes, the update for the meeting went very well. I got there and they called Kathy Ball right up and I was there. I got to spoke. Let me give you the final thing, 5-0. They took an actual motion. Yes, they are willing to help. They will keep a tabulation of Kathy and her staff's time, DPW's time. If we need to hire the police to escort the ballots at the end of the night, then that is a special, that's a special detail that they do their own billing or different billing than that.
Right, different budget line.
So they will work through it. Kathy would like, because she's going to be out for five days, the third week of November. So the more we can encourage Jim and Joanne to meet with Kathy even after hours this week, that would be Kathy's preference. So whatever we can do to try to assist that happening would be very helpful. There's a lot of work to do. I mean, there are posters that have to be made, there are instructions to the voters that have to meet, you know, the actual ballots. The ballots have to be printed, counted, set aside.
Are we using the voting machines?
We are not using voting machines. That's an additional expense that-
That's an expense.
Was not necessary. They were very happy. We talked for a little bit. Kathy made all of her concerns. I tried, made the case that, you know, it would really be helpful to have her as an advisory role. They reiterated that they would not be at the polls, but that would be our job to be there. So that's one of the things. And I started off asking them, when's the last time the school district, that they could remember, ever ran an election by ourselves? And they couldn't think of one either. So they were very happy to support our request for assistance.
Excellent.
Okay. That's excellent. Thank you very much for-
Oh, you're welcome. Absolutely. It's, it's, it's the day job that I love to do the job. And it's going to be weighing heavy on my heart and I'm going to be poking and prodding in whatever I can do to help. So I think Denise has been doing a lot of work too.
She sure has.
I know Denise has.
She sure has.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, this brings us to continuation of the 2014-15 proposed budget review and discussion. And I did just want to remind you that tonight theoretically is our last night to discuss this as we did promise the budget committee that they would have hard copies at Town Hall on Wednesday.
What time?
They may be warm.
All right. They might be, but that's okay. That's all right. I mean, honestly, they don't meet again until the 17th, but the effort was to get it ahead of time and have the opportunity to really take a look and formulate questions and, and be ready to rumble. So, all right. Anybody have anything burning right now after they, they've reviewed the budget?
If, if I could make mention, there was a couple of things that I was looking at. The, all the safety stuff we had talked about last time, it was about a hundred and something thousand dollars. I would like to see if we can't do them this year and remove that from next year's budget.
Now, given what we've just heard about, about the, some of these emergency expenditures that we just had to happen.
Did I miss something?
Oh, I apologize. You did. While you were gone, we had an interesting superintendent's report that addressed-
Two things, actually.
Several emergency expenditures here at the high school that-
That's an increase in insurance.
Forty, forty thousand dollar increase in property liability insurance because of the high school-
The flood?
Mm-hmm.
Forty thousand for just a premium?
Yes.
How much did it cost to fix whatever the flood problem was?
No, the first one was a lot.
The first one-
That was two years ago, yeah.
The second time, it was not as extensive. We are, however, still dealing with issues with the gym floor. There unfortunately, this is heartbreaking, but there are two areas that we're going to have to cut out and replace because there's pretty extensive warping.
From the last issue?
From the last issue. There are two areas that are in, in bad shape. And one of them is right by the, this end of the basket, right under, right underneath the hoop. It's, it's not good.
So that's bad, yeah.
It's bad.
Did we get a chance to touch base with Chief Sullivan regarding the status of the grant application he filed? And if we have an idea of turnaround time or answer time?
He, he doesn't have any, any new information. I will, I will reach out to him again.
No, I just didn't know. Because I know last time we talked about it and we weren't clear on timeframe. So I just know if we had become a-
Yeah, and unfortunately, a, as he, as he described it, it's not an actual grant. It's, it's almost like an intent to apply if there are any grants that are available. Not, not familiar with how FEMA grants work, but apparently, this is the process that you get, you get put in the queue. And then as they have money available, I guess that's how they do it. But I'm, I'm happy to reach back out to him to see if he has any updates.
All right, I know, I didn't want to be a thorn in his side. I just really wasn't sure where we were. Suzanne?
Yeah, as I was sitting at home listening to you folks the other night, talking about moving those safety items into doing them this year, I'm sitting there and I'm saying, what are they, nuts? This is only November. They've got the whole rest of the school year ahead of them. And I just think we're expecting to do too many things with what we anticipate. What do you call it for the teacher?
The teacher turnover money.
Yeah, the teachers, we're, we're hanging our hat on that just a little bit too much. And like I say, it's only November. I mean, we, we got $60,000 worth of bad news here tonight, you know?
What was the other 10?
$20,000 in emergency repairs here at the high school.
Eight thousand for the bleachers.
Eight thousand for the bleachers. And we already had $12,000 in expansion tanks that we had to replace last month.
That one we knew about, okay.
The, the other piece, Suzanne, is, as the board will recall, we received notification from LGC that we would be receiving a rather significant reduction in premium, so-called premium holiday, because of over-collection that LGC did two different fiscal years. I think it was fiscal year 11 and 13.
10 and 11.
10 and 11, thank you. So we, we are sitting on money from that as well.
We've kind of, we've gotten the first part of money from them. And we did the Mountain View roof with it.
Right.
And the second part, we've already thought we found a home for it.
Right.
So I'm sitting here saying, it's okay to say that, but those monies are pretty much gone.
The teacher turnover money and we had between teacher turnover money and savings and health insurance, it amounted to $511,000. So as, again, being transparent, as we developed the, the budget this year, we removed a lot of items from the budget because at this point, we don't know what our retirement status will be. We only have one confirmed retirement at this point. But we would anticipate picking up more. And past practice has shown us that we've had a pattern of money available and savings of, again, what I'm calling teacher turnover money and health insurance.
So you would be comfortable with taking $100,000 this year and doing those safety?
I'm going to, I'm going to look to Mr. Labor on this.
I'm going to say comfortable because that's, that's what I need. If you're not going to even remotely close to comfortable, I don't want to do it. I mean, it's scary.
Do we need to take a look at the status of the CVAs and what those potential causes are?
Also, is it November 15th that we get our notification for retirements?
November 15th, Kate. I'm, yeah.
It is in November. I know it's in the first half of November, so, or maybe November 30th.
But several of, we, we have. We've received one confirmed. And then we've received several that say, and I'm paraphrasing the language, but I'm providing notification and I'd like to reserve the actual decision until the spring. So it's, and some, and some of those, November 1st, thank you, Kate. But some of those, Keith, this isn't the first time we've seen them.
Yeah, I know.
So it's, it's, right now, we only have, we only have one for next year.
Yeah, and I know it's a couple of repeat ones that keep trying to decide if this is going to be the year for them.
Jenny, you had a question?
Yeah. I'm wondering if some of our emergency money that we need for things that have come up can come out of our 2.5% money? Because isn't that put aside for emergency use?
It is, that's correct.
Could some of this stuff come from there instead? And so that we could still feel comfortable doing the safety repairs that we wanted to do?
If the board desired for us to make the inquiry, we could certainly contact the DOE, explain what is being considered and request their approval. They do have full approval rights on the use of that money.
But I think that would be worth looking into since it's there for emergencies. And we've had some.
That's exactly what it shows.
You know, and, and we can only use that money for emergencies, so.
Or to reduce the tax rate, that's right.
Or the tax rate, yeah.
Just, just having a, a bit of a sidebar with Kate. Given what Mr. Cludier is talking about, I think the money that we're sitting on right now for teacher turnover money and the so-called LGC premium holiday, I think we could accommodate that this year. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Make a motion.
Then I would move that we would remove from this year's budget the monies for, give me a, give me a title.
Safety-related items to include security cameras, panic devices, interior door locks, and some exterior door work, which is, would be the project.
Hundred, hundred five?
About a hundred, Ray.
It was an estimate of a hundred thousand.
Can I just double check with you guys? As we're talking about pulling these items out of the budget. And we do have several line items in there for additional staff. And I, I recognize what we're talking about is, is using, you know, some monies that we anticipate to have this year. But I'm trying to get comfortable, which is why I'm asking the question. I'm trying to get comfortable with pulling these things that if they all recognize, have to get done. And I know we think we'll be able to do it with different funds, but I'm concerned because I want to know that we can do it. And I'd like to, to speak more about some of these additional positions that, that were talked about rather than-
We can't fund positions for next year or this year's budget.
Well, I understand, but maybe we don't fund them at all. We haven't really talked about whether or not we fund them. I mean, this is one of the, the first nights that we've really gotten into the nuts and bolts and nitty gritty. I mean, we've had some questions, we've had some discussions. And I don't know if we've really, as a board, really talked about where we want to go and how do we feel about some of these additional expenses that, that were put before us.
Despite or irrespective of those positions, I think that the safety things we're talking about, the reason for my motion, isn't to remove them from next year's budget. I would like this to be being done now. And because they're being done now, we wouldn't need them in next year's budget.
And I understand that. I worry though, will we actually be able to do it? I know we're hearing, we think we can, it looks like we can.
From, from the numbers, I, there is sufficient-
He said he was confident we could do this.
There is, there is sufficient data to show that there are funds available bar, because we don't have any more underground oil tanks, not many more expansion tanks. I'm not sure what else can happen. But I believe, and I would take up the, the additional personnel as well. We could look at both.
Yeah, you know, and this is, you know, what I'm looking at is I'm recognizing we're on default this year. I know that there was a tremendous, I remember sitting at this table back in, in March and, and looking at a tremendously long list of all sorts of things that were being requisitioned that were safety things that, that did not, you know, some of the safety did get done. I see some of the safety here. I, I want it done now too. I'm not arguing that point at all. I just, I just want to make sure that we're thinking this through because I want to make sure that, Don, that we can get it done. That's, that's what I'm, that's my effort in, in this conversation. Is, is I just want to, I, I know you're saying you're confident, but I just, I just want to make sure. We don't want to make a mistake. I don't want to see something happen and, oh gosh, we can't because, you know, it's on a deadline, you know, somewhere else. And, and then be in a situation where we didn't budget for it and, and now it's, we're, we're falling short. I just want to make sure that it's, it's talked through. For myself, I'm trying to get my, get my, I feel good.
I think when I was at home listening to you talk about these positions when they were presented, I just thought we've been juggling for so many years now that we're so far behind that at some point, we have to start catching up. Our programs are going to, we don't want to, we want to maintain our program. It's not going to be possible to do it anymore with the number of people we have on staff now. It's scary.
And I can say that I thought that the partners for the library or the assistants for the library were hugely important because of the impact that that was going to make on kids being able to use the resource of the library and to have that available to kids after school or homework help space maybe. I, I just thought that was a huge thing for that age group to be able to have that, especially with the hours, including some after-school hours.
I, I concur. What, what we're- What, what we're sending around there is Kate was kind enough to put together a summary of the new positions that were requested. We thought this might be helpful to have them all in one place to facilitate discussion.
Now, looking at these positions, which one is not directly related to educating the children?
Grounds, the grounds custodian. I would say that the Bartlett principal's secretary additional hours is not directly related to education to direct, direct.
Yeah, but she runs that school by herself.
Direct services to kids. This has to do with things like summer registrations. Bartlett custodian, the extra summer hours would, would not be directly related to students. And probably the Mountain View special ed secretary extra days.
The reason I ask actually, if we look at the, the amount, what it is, I'm looking at the bang for the buck. And just, at Bartlett, we talked about needing the extra help because there's nobody there sometimes to register the kids for school.
Right.
So, what do we do when we need to register a kid for school? Here's one.
And I think that's really sad that we're having our principal do that.
Yeah.
He has more important things to do than me.
And that cost is $6,700.
Well, she does everything. She does all the special ed, she does everything in that building.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that, that happen here, so it's, it's indirect school.
Indirect.
Indirect, so we call it indirect student. The only thing that I, I, I guess we can say isn't necessarily direct because even the Bartlett custodian for the extra days, we talked about the extra projects we have to do that directly relate to the skids, the kids in the school. Who wants to work, walk on dirty floors? I mean, it's an older building, those kinda things. But the only one that we would have to talk about then is the district grounds custodian. It was a great case. For me, it was a good case. I mean, what's the first thing? You drive up to a school and you see, unfortunately, if you see litter, if you see tattered and torn bushes, if you've seen things like that. Now, I'm not looking to find money to spend. That's not what I do. But that would be the only one that I think I would consider not funding if we had to.
Well, the Mountain View library got along with one para for many, many years. So, I, I'm, I'm a little surprised to see we're looking for two.
Two part-timers.
So, was it a full-time para or a part-time para?
I believe she was full-time.
It was, it was, if I remember correctly, it was a, it was a full-time position. Wendy and Nicole really conceptualized a, a new way of thinking about kids accessing that library, including before school, having the library open for kids to do research and, and work on homework after school. The two, the two positions are, are really a pretty good bargain. I mean, as it goes, it's not a benefits-eligible position. There's no retirement involved.
Okay. Ask and you shall be.
And I think that was the reason why it was two part-time was to be a little more cost-effective.
Are any of these reimbursable at MVMS? Probably not.
The special ed secretary, the library paras, the eighth grade, I, all of them at Mountain View would factor into the tuition rate.
Okay.
Right, Ray?
Any special ed money that would come into the special education secretary or the special education teacher, would that be funded by special ed money?
We, we talked about that. As it sits right now, the numbers that we've gone through, in IDEA money, we get just over $500,000 and it's really all wrapped up in, in salaries and benefits. Since the teachers haven't had a contract in a couple of years, we haven't paid increases in that which would've, which would've hurt the grant. But it's really pretty maxed out at this point. We're not anticipating, sometimes we get extra money from IDEA. Nothing that we know about. So, we don't, we're not anticipating that there's going to be an increase. The Bartlett special ed teacher, that is a position that is at Bartlett this year. The board will recall and we are paying for it out of IDEA money this year. I just don't, I don't believe we're gonna have that money next year available to fund that position. Another option that, you know, the, the board could consider is one of these positions or a couple of these positions you might be able to look at and see what we get for teacher retirements. If we had a bunch of teacher retirements, you probably could pick up a couple of these positions with the amount that we have budgeted now. I mean, if we go from a, a top-step teacher and we hire someone who's a, a beginning teacher, that's a significant savings when someone retires.
My thoughts as far as budget goes is these positions and the safety things are things that I feel are really important. Safety things this year, if we can manage it. But I really can't say that any of these, other than the, the district custodian, which I think is really important too. There's not a whole lot of leeway here. You can say we don't need these people or they wouldn't be a really big asset to our programs. Or even some of them to fill out the needs that we have in those areas that are, that are, we're skimping by and making somebody else do now. I would rather, and shoot me for saying this, but cut down maybe some of the supply lines or some replacement furniture or something before we got rid of any of these. And I think the safety things are huge because, you know, it's just those little things that could make a huge difference in a situation for, for kids and staff.
So, tell me this, we have, we're about $500,000 roughly over default. We have two teacher con, or we have teacher contracts and support staff contracts that we're looking to bring forward. What is our target that we are looking, are we comfortable presenting a budget that is $500,000 over default? Are, are we looking to, to meet a number in, in particular in relation to default? Is there anything in this budget that we are uncomfortable with? Is there anything we wanna see? I mean, I know I'm throwing a lot of questions out, but I'm trying to, to frame where, where we're going because these are all important things, I think, for us to weigh. And certainly moving forward, as I sit at the budget committee table, I am certain that I will be asked this and, and I'm looking to, to have, have an answer or, you know, be able to frame, frame where we are.
My personal opinion is, I think if we stay within around half a million dollars over our default budget, I'd feel comfortable trying to sell that to the community.
In addition to support staff contracts?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, you know, I think we're gonna be a bit unique on how we approach the contracts this year. So, I think if we can get that all put together, we can sell it.
And, and there's a motion on the floor to, to reduce the number by $100,000 for those safety things.
Right.
Yeah, we're not, we're a bit...
Yeah, we're talking under 500K then. I mean, I think 500K is probably around where we need to. Now, yes, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I think 500K is where we gotta be.
And plus, I'm sure that as this goes through the, excuse me, through the budget process, that the budget committee are, are going to have some thoughts about things that we need to look at again and, and possibly make some decisions from their input. So, I, I, I feel kinda comfortable sending this forward as the first part of the budget process and then seeing what happens to it as it goes down the road and through the rest of the process.
Okay. 'Cause I think what will happen is this will go to the budget committee and, and if it's anything like what happened last year, there will be hours and hours of discussion and questions and, and reductions made. And I will have them brought back. Obviously, we are the governing body, there, there's no question there. But I do think it's important that if there are gonna be cuts to our budget, that, that we make them ourselves or at least that, you know, we have a good, strong, strong idea.
You know, but I think the more, the more we cut, they're still gonna find things that they wanna cut. I mean, it's, it's been that way year after year after year. We've always tried to bring forward a budget that we thought was, for us, bare bones and they always took it down to the marrow.
Oh, I lost, what, $800,000 worth of arguments last year.
I know.
I'm still not over it.
Quite honestly, I mean, there has to be an awareness by this board, by the budget committee and by the town that we've been on default, excuse me, default or lower for five years in a row now. We cannot continue down that same path and keep the wonderful school system that we have.
I do genuinely think that the, the budget committee does not wanna see us at default. I genuinely think they want a budget that will pass.
Exactly.
I, I do. I absolutely came down. I believe that a vast majority of that board wants to see a budget that will pass.
Yep. And you know, sometimes listening to what their suggestions are and what their questions are, sometimes, I mean, we could just think, oh, okay, yeah, maybe we could come to a compromise on that because we have one job to do and they have another job to do. And they're both different jobs. You know, we have to make sure that the budget that we're sending in reflects our needs for education and their job is to make sure that the taxpayers are happy and that it's a budget that they feel that will fly with the community. So, I mean, there's two different jobs and I think we've done our job very well and they will look at it and do their job and then we'll come to a consensus of the minds and go from there.
You mean compromise?
Uh, well, you know, much like the Congress, when I was a voted budget committee member, there was a real effort to compromise. We didn't get our number, they didn't get their number, we settled for something in between.
I remember.
These last, those days, huh, weren't those nice?
Yep.
And these last few years, there has been no willingness to compromise whatsoever.
It's getting better.
Last, last year, we put forward a budget that both the school board and the budget committee supported.
Yeah, and didn't pass.
It did not pass. And that does hang, I, I believe that does cast a power over the table. There's no question that that is on everybody's mind. And, and I believe it absolutely will be on everybody's mind as they move forward in the budget. Is that sense of darn it, we worked really hard to be thoughtful and careful and get a budget that we thought was appropriate and it didn't pass.
And you know what I think maybe we need to do is, you know, just toot our horns a little bit louder in the wonderful things we do and the education the kids in our town get for a lot less money than a lot of other communities. Like we use our money very well and when we ask for something, it's because we need it, not because it's a frivolous request. And they have to realize that at some point, we can't continue giving that quality education at the same price all the time, you know? That, that rates go up on everything. But we've held pretty fast to what our rates have been as far as tuition per person for students and we've done a really good job with managing our money. But you can only manage that little money so much for so long without having, you know, consequences for it. I think maybe we just need to do a better job at educating people to know that there is a point where you can't do it anymore.
Ben?
Just to clarify now, the 14th and the 21st, that's when the meeting, we are meeting with, with, with the meeting with the budget committee, is that correct?
Budget committee is scheduled to take up our budget.
On the 14th and 21st, that I have in the book, and then the following, Tuesday?
It would be, yeah, Thursdays, yes.
Yeah, so what time is that every, is there seven?
Budget committee starts at seven.
And then home?
You betcha.
Okay.
You betcha, and the regular committee, yeah, 14, 21, 5 and 12 every day.
I said what I thought, okay, thank you.
Um, I have a motion on the floor that I have to admit I forgot about. Um, Dan, could you please?
What is the part of the discussion?
Here's, here's a curious question because as we wrap all of this through and we're thinking about it, is the increase to the SAU service line part of the default?
It is.
Okay, so what, what I asked last, I think last week was, we're $500,000 over the default and do we have of that, can we identify the specific items that might be something for us to look at? Now, we talked about the teacher list here, which is about $211,000. That wouldn't be part of the default because it's new. There's, is that $100,000 part of what wouldn't be in, in the default or that?
The $100,000 wouldn't be in the default. Other items that would not be in default and making up the $500,000 would be the supply lines and the equipment lines.
Late buses, field trips.
Yep. So, we have late buses that we're not doing right now.
Right.
And that cost estimate is twenty?
That's an additional $52,000.
$52,000.
There are two late buses at $26,000 each.
Then there was one other thing I was thinking of, which was the Honeywell project, which is now on a different line, should be mitigated by the reduction to fuel.
Correct. Honeywell too.
Right, Honeywell too.
And that reduction in the fuel factored into the default, default in a favorable way.
Yes.
So, the reduction, moving, again, moving from oil to propane was a very significant savings.
About $200,000, round numbers.
Wow.
It's a good savings.
You know, in, in terms of, Ray, I, I can't see what you're looking at, but are you looking at, also factored into this, I think Diane, is the default is up quite a bit over this year's budget. And I know that folks are, folks have either just received or are receiving their tax bills.
Just got them.
Um, we know what happened with a, a lot of folks' assessments. You know, all, all of it coming together into a package, the effect on the tax rate, the two contracts, and then what is the magic number? I was clear with the board when, when we were developing this. We took the principals' budget where, where we factored in things that the principals had asked for and it was $1.7 million over default. We cut that budget all the way down below default. So, we did it as sort of an exercise that if we didn't get a budget or if we were at default or below, what would that look like? And then we built the budget back up with what we thought our priorities were. So, really, what, what we've tried to do is, is sort of plan for the worst. That if, if we didn't get the budget, but again, I, for me, the most important thing are the, the two contracts. That, that is, those are the top priority from, from my perspective.
And didn't two contracts get passed with the town last year?
No.
Didn't either the DPW and the police or the fire? I think two of those were passed last year.
So, we gonna vote on the motion?
Uh, that was my intent. I did just want Mr. Cludier to restate the motion just because we have carried on quite a bit since the motion was made.
I have a question. Dan Cludier, motion to remove from this year's money the monies for safety-related items to include security cameras, panic devices, interior door locks and exterior doors, subject apply. Susan and Trumper.
From this year's or from next year's?
From the budget we're preparing.
Yeah, 2014.
Next, the next, next year.
2014, 15.
Yeah, okay.
All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Six, I can't, I'm sorry, so six, one, zero, thank you. Do we have any further discussion?
Well, the $40,000 increase in insurance, that's not in this budget.
We just got that.
Right. So are we going to handle that?
It becomes part of the default, right?
Yep.
It'll have to be added to the existing, our existing estimate for insurance was a hundred three thousand in the budget. We will need to increase that by thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, so the default will be going up?
Yes.
To take, take that, okay. So we're, yeah, that's a, it's a big, it's going to be a big pill.
Yeah.
And we, we looked at some of the spots where that two point four increase we're coming to. And, um, it is what it is, so right now we're probably, with all the other adjustments we made, because we, 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 there were a couple of, well, we took the other two, so the hundred thousand we just took out is probably going to be a little more than a hundred if we double budgeted the forty for the extra camera and stuff. So I'm not sure whether the electronic one.
Do you have a follow-on on that?
Yeah, there were a couple of other things that were doubled in there.
Do we have a dollar amount on that specifically? I know we're estimating at a hundred thousand. What was just removed was total of about a hundred thousand.
Do we have a specific dollar amount?
Yeah.
We, we can.
If you don't, it's all good. I just said, you know, sometimes.
We can get to the dollar amount because we had, we had maintenance, I mean, we would certainly hit the, the cameras first, the interior door locks, and then, um, without, throughout the budget were some, um, sets of exterior doors and the like. So we would, we would compile all that to get to that hundred thousand dollar amount. There was one where you had indicated the camera recorder machine was included twice. The DVR was listed, it was listed twice. It's one of my blue tabs in here. And does that, is that included as part of the hundred or do we add that to the hundred just to come up with a rough number? Is where I'm coming from.
I think our add was about twenty thousand dollars per, per camera DVR setup.
Maple?
We were adding that.
Right, what, what we had done was the high school, we added, we added ten thousand dollars on page one twenty-three. We have additional security cameras and office upgrade and five exterior cameras, so a total of sixteen thousand. We were going to take the twenty thousand dollar general cost, were, was, we included cameras for Maple and we included a DVR for Maple. Maple doesn't need a DVR. We were going to take that DVR and put it at the high school. The cameras are still needed at the high school, so I'm, I, I don't know that there's a lot to take out of that, Dan. Definitely the, the DVR, um, the DVRs can hold sixteen cameras. And the high school could use every bit of those sixteen. Yep. And some of the cameras that we have now at Bartlett and Glen Lake and Maple don't work right. The, they're old, they're, they need to be replaced. They, there are days where it's sunny and the glare that you get off the cameras, um, it's just, and the, the quality difference between the newer cameras and cameras from six years ago is like night and day.
Yeah, there's no doubt that they need to be done. There's absolutely no question they need to be done.
No doubt. No doubt.
This is a small, um, a small question, but I have it. I was not here for Glen Lake's presentation. Um, the increase by about two thou- three thousand for reinstating, um, the grounds care for seating.
For slice seating.
Yeah, where are we with that?
The slice seating was, the field at Glen Lake, which is next to the playground, is in rough shape. It's, it's a field that has not been, it's not been overseeded, it's not been sliced seeded. It needs, um, a bit of top dress. It's just, it's, it's in bad shape. It's rocky, it's bumpy, it's, and what they were looking to do was to have a nicer grass field for activities for the kids, for different types of, um, you know, recess and, and the like. And they take their kids outside sometimes and do, um, outside time and it's just, the grass is in bad shape.
And when you think of it, those are little kids, they're running around, that can tip over really easily and fall and, um, it's not a very nice surface to fall on.
No, it's not a nice surface. And it's too bad because our playground is nice. Our, our playground is a, a really developmentally appropriate playground for kids of that age. It's, it's safe with the rubberized mulch throughout it. And a- again, I, I will say, I know that the district grounds position is not directly related to education, but it is something that I feel strongly about. I think, I think there's a lot of pride that we could gain in our buildings. I think, um, people seeing the quality of our education and seeing, walking up to the front door and you see, um, you see facilities that are neglected, the grounds are in bad shape.
Some of the places, the weeds are taller than the kids. They are.
Yeah.
They are. My art too.
First impressions.
Yep.
All right, does anybody else have anything burning that they wish to bring forward?
On the revenues.
Is this the budget we wish to present to the budget committee?
Well, now it's only about four hundred thousand over.
The default.
Default, around there somewhere. Yeah, here, take ten thousand.
The.
Four hundred here, but there were, there were several other double entries.
It must will be after, around four hundred thousand after you take care of all the double entries and everything.
You just took off almost a hundred thousand there with the, so it should be.
The double entries were in that area.
We only had a couple though.
Hi.
We didn't have.
Ten thousand dollars.
It was the fall, it was the library fallout software.
That was the only change, that was the only.
Did we get a chance to look back at the, because you weren't here that night, at the projected revenues? Projecting ninety-three or closer to that for tuition?
I think they, they said it was like seventy-something?
Seventy, the Dunbarton?
Yeah, seventy-nine.
Seventy-five percent of the current Dunbarton enrollment is what Ray had projected, which is, which is probably a pretty good number, I think, if you factor out one grade level. Right. Well, we did a, we looked at the numbers and it came out with ninety-three. How does the seventy-five percent in the ninety-three compare?
We'd assumed a hundred and twenty students coming into the high school. Taking seventy-five percent of that is ninety kids.
So ninety versus ninety-three.
Right.
That's close enough for, for this schedule.
Right.
You definitely have the tuition from Dunbarton?
Yes.
You've, uh, you have a note here, you figured fifty percent.
I'm sorry?
I think you have a note here for, uh,
I am, sure.
for the departure, so it's fifty percent of current house, current enrollment. So if you get seventy-five percent, you got an increase.
We'll have an increase in, uh, down, we also have a, this is a net calculation, however, we're in with a decrease in the area school, the arrangement. Unfortunately, the costs go up for New Boston and they go up for, um, for Gopson. So the net reduction we had quoted in there was something like eight hundred thousand dollars.
Eight hundred and three.
Yep. So you don't lose all of the, all of the tuition. It is somewhat mitigated by increases from any other southern district.
At our next meeting, can we get an update on what Ed Kaplan is working on as far as that whole Dunbarton situation? We haven't heard anything, at least I'm, that I'm aware of, from when we had that meeting upstairs at the S.
Um, we can, we can look at, um.
At the S A U.
Uh, we can get something together, right? Do we have anything else about budget? All right.
I'm hoping that's very comfortable to support.
All right. Do I have, do I need a motion to move this forward?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
So Keith is making a motion for what?
Um, to approve our budget as amended, and what we did was we took a hundred thousand dollars out of current one. So that number will be.
Might actually not, not encourage you to give an exact number.
Yeah, don't, don't give us the number.
Yeah, I'm thinking, the number here has still that typo in it, so, yeah.
Motion what you're doing, and then I will entertain a, see if I have a second.
Just send it to the budget committee.
Yeah, send it to the budget committee, yes.
Do I have a second? We have a second if I can. Um, any further discussion? Uh, oh, Raymond.
Just one question, does the board want an update on revenue?
Yes.
He's not a member of the board.
Come again, please?
Does the board, is the board looking for an update on revenue? I believe the number you have is, is a good one.
So we just got one, right? We just got one last Wednesday?
For, for a revenue budget, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, we can certainly refresh based on any new news that might develop between now and our next meeting, if you so desire.
I suppose it would be by the fourteenth, would it? Now we would have to have that by the fourteenth.
It'll be an ex, I believe the expenditure budget is what's presented.
No, it's, it's, right. The, the budget committee get the expenditure budget, that's, they, they deal with appropriations.
They don't, the revenue.
Yeah, okay. So the revenue will be on the eighteenth, okay.
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 Thank you very much, Ray. All right. Sorry, Rhonda is wondering if she should join us. So I am listening, but I'm like, no, go, go home. Um, all right, so we have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, we.
Oh, go ahead.
We may want to go into non-public for, well, I would like to get direction from you guys
Okay.
on the G E S S, it shouldn't take that long, but we've got a counterproposal proposal kind of thing going on.
Sure, so we can enter into non-public, um.
Just a question on the budget, this amended budget, will we be getting an updated amended budget before the budget committee meeting?
No, uh, before the budget committee meeting, they meet on, we will meet the Monday before.
No, we don't.
Yeah, we do.
Ben, we could probably get, Ray, when we're printing budgets for the budget committee, we could print budgets for the board.
We meet on the eighteenth.
Yeah, but we'll meet with them on the fourteenth.
I don't want paper. I would.
No.
Because you're going to update the spreadsheet, right, for the budget meeting?
I thought it was the fourteenth and twenty-first.
So I am happy just with an update.
That's what she said.
You know what, I can't sign contracts.
Spreadsheet so that we could save paper?
Well, I'm trying to, yes.
Because I can, the notes haven't changed, the numbers did. Right. So for me, I'd be just as.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I'm a week off.
Well, no, I just, I'm just trying to.
No, I'm a week off.
We don't need a whole new budget, we just need some pages that are going to be different.
Exactly, and an updated bottom line and thing, and reference to where.
Sometimes figuring out which number that changed on which page is not going to. I, I would almost rather print, I mean, I, again, I hate to waste the paper, but sometimes if you, you move things around, I, I'm just hesitant that your, your page one twenty-three looks different than the budget.
It's going to be different.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, again, you, you figure the scope of the budget and, um.
Okay.
Diane?
Yes, please.
Do you have a count on the number of copies, copies the budget committee is looking for?
It's a sixteen person board.
It's fifteen of them, I think.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Has Grassmere sent their representative?
Grassmere hasn't.
Then that's fifteen. But you want one for the clerk?
I don't think it hurts to have it. I don't think it hurts to have it, to have that.
I agree, okay, because it's nice for them to be able to flip and find the numbers we're talking about so they can check it right out.
Okay.
All right. So we do have a motion to go into non-public.
Based on RSA.
Pursuant to RSA nine one A. Um, I'm looking for my subsection though, and I don't have my cheat sheets.
Eight colon three.
Um. Pursuant at ninety, ninety-one A, colon three, subsection two.
Good timing, Rhonda.
Negotiation pending. So, sub, colon two, Roman two, subsection E.
So will.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Hi Suzanne, all in favor? Do you need a roll call, please?
Aye.
Yes. No, yes, we're going to non-public.
Oh, yes.
You don't get to abstain on that. Um, Ms. Jennings?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. All right, thank you. We are now in non-public. Um, but if I'm not mistaken, the length of time it takes to break this down, we are recommended that we go into the high school conference room. So Rhonda, I hope you didn't get too comfortable seeing that too.
Uh, no, this has been my day, I can do it again.
On a, I'm sorry, you know, it was, it was something.